Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out on this cold Tuesday night to sit and listen to us as we go about the business of the school. At this time, I would call the meeting to order. It is the regular monthly meeting of the Lexington County School District Three Board of Trustees. It is Tuesday, January sixteenth.
At six P. M. And we are meeting in the district office. At this time, we will welcome James Sawyer and Heath Pierce to give us our pledge of allegiance and prayer.
To the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you today to ask for your guidance, wisdom, and support throughout this meeting. We thank you for the members of the board who dedicate their time to come together and make the best decisions for our student body and staff. Help us to have meaningful discussions that lead to making the right decisions for our students, staff, and our community. Please stand, I mean, please help us grow closer as a group during this meeting. Please be with everyone and keep them safe as we return home. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you both for being here. Item one point four is approval of the agenda, and you have your agenda in your packets. You have it before you. Without objection, we will approve the agenda as presenting it. The agenda is approved. We also have the minutes from our December twelfth, twenty twenty-three regular board meeting. And if there is no objection, we will approve those as well. The minutes from December twelfth have been approved. At this time, we have our signing of our SCSBA ethical poster. And this is something we do every year in January. It's where we, as board members, pledge our efforts and remind ourselves why we are school board members and what we are here for. So we will be signing this, and I will read this, so we will know what we're signing. And it says, "As members of the Board of Trustees, we pledge our efforts to improve public education in our community and will solemnly try to represent the interests of the entire district when making decisions and to rely on available facts and on our judgment rather than on individuals or special interest groups. We understand the proper role of the board to set policies governing the district and to hire the chief administrator officer to carry out these policies. We encourage an open exchange of ideas by all board members during the decision-making process. We seek regular communications between the board and students, staff, and all segments of the community. We attend all board meetings to study issues facing the board and to enact policies and official actions only after full discussion at such meetings. We will work with other board members in a conscientious and courteous manner, befitting the public trust placed in the position of the school board trustee. We will communicate concerns and public reaction to board policies and school programs to the superintendent and other board members in a professional manner. We will support employment of the persons best qualified for staff positions and to ensure a regular and impartial evaluation to all staff. We will avoid conflicts of interest and to refrain from using our board positions for personal or partisan gain. We encourage recognition of the achievements of students and staff and of the involvement of community residents. We support legislation and funding which will improve the educational opportunities and environment for students and staff. We take no individual action which would compromise the integrity of the board or administration and to respect the confidentiality of information that is privileged under the Freedom of Information Act. We will study current educational issues and to participate in training programs such as those offered through the South Carolina School Boards Association. And we make our district's educational setting the best possible to encourage all students to achieve and to learn, love learning." So I will be passing this around, and we will sign this. And you should have a pen at your station. Thank you all for doing that and your commitment. This time, we will move on to two point O, our consent items, the financial report with Ms. Roden.
Good evening. You received your statements in your packet. The December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three cash balance analysis. There's no big items of note for December. We did have our biggest expenditure for the building projects to date for one month. But everything else is on track. We did receive today a tax deposit from Lexington County. We start getting our, you know, bigger deposits in January and February. Do you have any specific questions about the revenues and expenditure statements? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, item two point two, our superintendent's report with Dr. Atkinson.
Thank you. We had a very successful return from the Christmas break, barring all the multiple severe weather threats and disruptions that we had. But we have had a successful return after, after extended break. We had one teacher from the primary school that was chosen as a WLTX News nineteen Teacher of the Week. That's Livy Crowell. She's a second-year art teacher at the primary school. And News nineteen anchor Kristia Calcagno and Campbell Crew came out and surprised her on December the fourteenth. And we're very proud of her. As you're aware, we are transitioning to Golden Panther passes from the old paper passes that have been around for years, and that has been a big hit. And we are transitioning to nothing but Golden Panther passes for next year. But so far, we have given out eighty-nine Golden Panther passes to our senior citizens that live within the boundaries of Lexington School District Three. Always a hit each year at the pre-holiday event at the primary school was the annual four K box parade. That was held on December the fifteenth. Lots of excited students and some really great artwork for four-year-olds. This year's twenty-first Annual Santa's Closet at Saint John's United Methodist Church was a, was a success. I want to thank the Election Three Panther pals mentoring program. And our students were able to go and shop with their mentor and be, and pick out some gifts for their, their parents, siblings, and other family members who, who may live with them. We also had an annual shop with a cop event sponsored by our Batesburg Leesville Police Department, Lexington Three SROs, volunteers from the VFW, and our district social worker, where students received a two hundred dollar gift card and were able to go and shop with, with their sponsors. I've updated you several times on the, the primary school and elementary school fresh fruit and vegetables program, but that kicked off on January the eighth. And all of our elementary students and primary students will receive bags of fresh fruit and vegetables for them to, you know, for snack on outside the regular lunchtime. Next, I want to share with you a few photos. I thought it was interesting that some of the photos just happened to be exactly a year ago and some multiple years ago as today. So if you go back to January twenty twenty-one, the campus has really changed a lot since this, this drone picture was taken before we had our groundbreaking ceremony to, to kick off our bond projects. All right, it worked. There we go. All right. So if you go back to January seventeenth of last year, this is what the front of the high school looked like. Now, it wasn't complete yet, had not paved the parking area yet, and it looks like we still had a good bit of work to do. And you can see there's some fencing, some blue, silk fencing in the back, but very little had occurred for the gym at that point. All right. So I want to go back and take a look at the softball press box. So this was September twenty twenty-three. So this has moved fairly quickly. So in September up until, till recently. So again, if I don't put a date on this within the last month, so some of these are in, in sequence. But again, you can see that, that, it, it looks like it always belonged there, where it blends in. Right there, it had not been painted yet. Still haven't been completely painted there yet, but again, no way to get it up there yet. But that has been rectified, maybe. Still the front without the steps, but then the steps have been added and have been welded. So as of yesterday, this is what it looks like from the inside. So there's your view looking out the, the press box. So that, that should be all ready for our, our first softball game. I think it's on February the fifteenth, the scrimmage. We still had to put the flooring in, as you can tell, and we, and Stephen has to do some of the wiring to connect the school boards and things like that there. But otherwise, the building is pretty much complete. Our competition gym, this was January of last year, and you, you can see that the sidewalk to the Fine Arts Center is still there. Just a little bit of dirt moved in that corner, but otherwise, at the beginning of January last year, this is, that's all it's been, had been completed on the gym. That little bit of dirt that's been moved there. Couple of weeks later, this is what it looked like still in January. So that, again, a little over a year ago, all right, we started actually on the, on the competition gym. This was in April of last year. I just wanted, I put this picture up here so you could just see how deep that back wall is into the bank that butts up against to the main building. You can see those people down on the ladder, and they look kind of tiny. So it's, it's pretty, pretty good ways down into the bank. And this is what it's looked like in the last month. Here, it looks like the roof hadn't been completed, but it has been completed now. This is the front. Went the wrong way. Hang on. Again, another angle from the front. You can see the, this was taken a few days ago. But this morning, they started putting the windows into that top right section. Obviously, it's not there now. And they'll be putting in the glass in the front. They're starting it, you know, as, as I speak, they've been doing that today. And you will be able to see, you know, the Panthers through that big glass at night that will be eliminated. So that's going to really look nice. Again, just another angle from, from the front. Another, again, this is the, the, with all the glass will be, you'll be able to see in. Another angle into the lobby. This is the back of the gym. Now, this is important because we had to change some of our grading there because as it was designed, students would have been able to walk down that hill and climb right up on the roof. So we did have to make some adjustments there so they couldn't do that. Again, in the back angle where you see that fits in. What's interesting in this picture is you remember how many steps you had to climb to get to the Fine Arts Center? Notice that the grade now is level with the entrance to the Fine Arts Center. And if you see that door, not the one on the right, but the far left with the little awning, that's the elevator exit. So you can come in and go up the elevator, come out there, and that'll, you know, of course, be concrete. And then enter the same level as the Fine Arts Center or come on up into the building. The elevator has been quite a challenge, but we, we're getting there. All right. So this is inside the lobby, and you're looking into the main entrance that will take you into the gym. The concession stand area is to my left, and you'll see a picture of that in a moment. Again, another angle, and you can see that we kind of designed this so we can use this as a meeting space. And you see, get an idea how large that meeting space is, that, you know, we can have quite a few. Right now, we think we probably can get about two hundred people in there. I don't know. That may be a little bit high in the sky. But again, it's going to be a nice meeting area. This is the concession stand area to the left. If you look at that lift, down to the left, there is a hallway that goes down to some other, some offices and storage down to the left. This is, this picture does not do the size of the gym justice because the scale just doesn't seem, when you stand in there, you realize how large it is. The actual, the roof is about six inches lower than the moratorium for the highest buildings that can be built in Batesburg Leesville at thirty-five feet. So it's thirty-four, six inches, I believe, is the actual number. So supposedly, you're not supposed to be able to build a building in Batesburg Leesville over thirty-five feet. I think our Fine Arts Center might have been grandfathered in years ago because I think it might be a little bit above that. This is the back hallway that goes to the locker rooms and the officials' dressing room and some coaches' offices back in this area. And again, it goes to other directions as well. So that's all the, of the gym. Now, I want to show you the last phase, some of the pictures of the math hallway and the restroom. So again, we have, once we finish phase five, we'll have completed all the renovations inside the, the original building. I wanted to show you this because this is the, the restrooms on the left side of the building that matches your, if you remember, we had to, when we renovated the right side, we had to take it all the way down to this. So that was the, the male and female restrooms. As you can see, they had to dig down in to get to all the piping and a lot of electrical work. All right. This wall is, looks really good. You see the brand-new floor, but I want to show you what's on the other side of this wall. So I've kind of mentioned this to you all earlier, but again, this is the finished wall right outside of the cafeteria. Everything's fine there. But on the other side of the wall, this is what we found. It was some, was some very bad plumbing work. I'm not sure how it ever passed inspection years ago. But this is the worst thing we found throughout the whole renovation project, which is kind of surprising. And we'll zoom in in just a moment. But you can see, that's not normally how you run pipes through, through a block wall. You don't knock out the, the block and then put the piping there. And so this is what it looked like up close. There's really some substandard work that has been repaired since then. So again, on, on the other side of this is that beautiful painted wall. That's been repaired. It's now, you know, a, you know, it's completely structurally sound and, you know, finished wall. This is the math hallway. I'm sad to say that all that brown carpet is now gone. So I don't know what, what's been used with it. But again, we've had, we've started in there. As you know, we're running all new duct work because the original duct work was like a fiberglass board that leaked, and it was very hard. It was, it was just not energy efficient at all. And again, so we've got, you know, the insulated duct work that goes down through there. Again, just another picture of the hallway as they have worked. This was two classrooms. It will become two classrooms again. But because of the length of the hallway, we had to put in a firewall. And if you see those block kind of in the, in the distance, you can see that a wall is being put up, concrete block there in the back. I'm going to zoom in. So this is the wall that's separating those two classrooms. It will go all the way across the hallway over into the other side. The fire marshal and fire regulations require this two-hour wall with fire doors. And you can see it now. There's the, the, the partition there, and there'll be two fire doors. That's about midway through the hall that goes along with our new sprinkling system. And this is just a, a classroom. I just wanted to show you what it, what they take it down to, just a block wall, nothing, ceilings, floors, everything is gone. And then they'll go back and sprinkle this, you know, and new duct work, new flooring, new ceilings, and then the, the fire sprinkler system. You see this red pipe at the top? That is, that's the fire sprinkler system. All right, the spaceship. We're getting rid of the, the metal roof. And so we are now, we have made it all the way around where we're taking the Manseer roof down. And we're going back with the, the, the EPHAS, which is a Stucco product. And so all the metal on the main building is, is finished yesterday coming down, and now they're going back and putting it up. It's amazing that that's not the final product, but it looks better than what was there. So you can see the, I wanted to show you this picture so you can see the, the green board followed by the blue board followed by the white insulation. And they'll put the Stucco on top of that. So again, it's, it's a long process to get that put up. Again, here's, this is another area where it's been put up. And I really think it's going to blend really well. So you can see, this is the back of the cafeteria. I thought I had a, an updated picture, but this is complete. Color and everything, it's a dark brown that matches the brown trim on, on the windows. Again, you can see now it blends in, and it looks like it, you know, it, it will match the, the new building. And this is the, the last section, and they have finished. If you see on the right, you still, still see the metal there, but that's gone today. And this is, again, where, where they made it all the way around. They have tried to work their way so that they're not disturbing students. And this is the math hallway on the right, and you'll see the dirty-looking roof where that's been replaced too with the new roofing system. So because the students aren't in there now, so they were trying to do all that at the same time. All right. Let's take a look at some of the renovations that's been ongoing at the, at the primary school. I thought this is really interesting. I pulled this from January sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. So a year ago today, this is what the primary school looked like in the back. And you know that we're occupying and using these two areas now. Still on January sixteenth, and then today. So that's, I think, a lot of progress in a year's time in that area. And just an aerial view of the same area, another view, and you can see all the work that's been done with the, with the parking lot and with the, with the road and all that that we've done over the course of time. All right, Ms. Kir, I'm going to ask you a trick question. I want you to tell me what this room is. You ready?
It's raised. It's up the gym.
This is the cafeteria.
Yeah.
At best my knowledge, you ate twenty-five thousand meals in there.
Yeah. I mean, I didn't mean the gym. I meant where the gym, where PE used to be, where Phyllis was. That's it.
Yeah, this is the old cafeteria. This was the stage. And you can see the outline of where the steps have been removed there on the bottom. This is what it looked like a little bit before that, before they put the wall in there. So that's the stage area. This area is being closed in, and this is going to be our PE teacher's work area on the stage. So they'll get two offices up there that they can work, and then this room is being converted into two PE classrooms. So this is the old cafeteria. It's been painted. That beautiful lolic duct work has been painted. Just really looks fresh right there. But again, they'll, they'll divide this in half, and they'll have two classrooms to work from. Now, on this back right corner, there are, there are new restrooms in there as well that will be shared between the PE classrooms and also the new music room. So they won't have to leave their area to go to a restroom. So there's a, two brand-new restrooms there.
There were many, many, many classes that learned the boot scoot and boogie up there on that stage from Phyllis Ball.
So there's the original, I don't, I won't call it purple because I don't think it's the right color, but that was the original there. And you'll see in the back where the area you would go into the actual cafeteria and the kitchen to pick up your food, you can see that one of the doors has been closed up, and there's still a door, a hole in the wall there where they're working through. This is the, the back, this is where the kitchen area was at. They have completely gutted it. We're getting classrooms. We'll have, like I said, the music room will be there. There'll be another full-size classroom and a resource classroom, and then there's two additional restrooms that will be in there. So this is the kitchen completely gutted. You know, they've gone back in, you know, and done the work there. This hallway that's between where the cafeteria was and the classrooms, and this will become the epoxy floor that matches the other epoxy that's on the other, on the four K hallway. Remember, I showed you that? That'll be, what'll be in, on this hall there. So that tile will be coming up. And again, just, this is the kitchen area. You don't realize how large the kitchen actually is until you've taken out all the, all the equipment.
That was where the floor had been. Was that where the?
Yeah, that's like where equipment, something, maybe it might have been a mixer or something else. You know, there, some kind of built-in. So that'll be coming up too. And then, as you can see, they were framing up walls back in there for those classrooms. And again, this is just the kitchen where they've been doing work there. I think that's it. So I just wanted to show you. It's kind of hard to get out and walk around and see that, but I wanted you to see that, see that work is still going on in there and making progress.
When you say it's going to take a year, it feels like a long time. But when you look at how much progress you've made in a year, you feel like you've got a lot to do in a year.
I know. Wish you did.
When you start naming the things that have been done in the last year, it's, it's a good bit.
Thank you for that. That's very good. Thank you. All right, we will move, I'm assuming that was it.
That was it.
Okay. I didn't mean to cut you off. Wanted to check. We will move on to item, the recognition, three point one, Lexington County School District Three Board of Trustees. Recognition and appreciation by Ms. McKenzie Taylor, Director of Public Information and Community Relations.
Good evening, Madam Chair and fellow Board of Trustees members. It is my honor this evening to stand before you and be able to recognize each of you as part of School Board Recognition Month. Governor Henry McMaster officially has declared that January in South Carolina is School Board Recognition Month, and Lexington Three is joining school districts all across the state in recognizing you, our valued Board of Trustees members. Across South Carolina, there are more than six hundred individuals who serve on school boards, and they help guide public education in our state. But of course, we think that all of you are the creme de la creme. The School Board Recognition Month theme this year, as set forth by the School Boards Association, is Forward Together, and it serves to remind us all to celebrate the unique role that school boards play in championing and advocating for quality education and the ownership that you all take in governing our local public schools. This year, one of the ways that we are celebrating you here in Lexington Three is via social media. So every Tuesday and Thursday throughout the month of January, we are highlighting each one of you on our district Facebook page and also on our website via the live feed that feeds into our mobile phone app. So you can find your write-up and your picture there. And the goal in doing this is just to let our community know more about you and about the great work that you're doing for our schools here in Batesburg Leesville. You also have some really great gifts at your seats tonight, courtesy of Lexington Three, and I know you all will surely enjoy them. So on behalf of the students, the staff, and the administration in Lexington Three, we thank you. We thank you for your dedication to our schools and for your dedication in making Lexington Three what we say is the absolute best place to be. So we're grateful for your vision. We're grateful for your leadership, but above all, we're grateful for your very generous and kind hearts. So thank you all.
Thank you, McKenzie. And thank everybody in the district. Y'all make our job easy.
You do. You take good care of us.
Yes. Four point O, public participation. No, no cards? All right, then we will move on to item five point O, our information item. The Assessment and Accountability Update with Jeff Potts, Director of Accountability and Assessment.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Atkinson, members of the board. Tonight, I plan to share with you some information about our state report card ratings. These were released back in the fall, and I want to be able to give you an idea of not just what the ratings were, the summary for the ratings at each of the schools, but how the ratings are actually calculated to the best that I can in a short period of time. First of all, I want to share with you just the elements that exist in making up the report card ratings for each of the schools, for elementary, middle, and high school. You'll notice that there are up to seven different categories that make up the ratings. The ratings are basically, for the most part, they're created based upon student test scores, standardized test scores, SC Ready, and of course, access for ELLs. There's also climate surveys, which students and teachers take at the end of the year. And of course, graduation rates and college and career readiness indicators. There's a certain weight that each of these assessments and categories correspond to the ratings at each of the schools. And you'll notice that they can vary anywhere from five percent. And you'll notice that, uh, they can vary anywhere from five percent for, uh, school climate at the high school to as high as thirty-five percent at the elementary and middle school for academic achievement, which is, uh, ELA and math performance on SC Ready. You notice two areas of red. Basically those areas were swapped this last year because the State Department had enough information, uh, for not just biology one, but also added US history, uh, this year. So they swapped those two, uh, in the ratings for twenty-three. Um, there are indicator conversions that correspond to each one of these assessments. I don't want to go in too much detail, but for the most part, if a student takes SC Ready, they're going to score one of four, uh, levels, one of four performance levels from does not meet expectations all the way to exceeds expectations. And the students in the elementary, middle school earn as, uh, as many as three points, uh, from zero to three points based upon their, uh, performance on SC Ready. And likewise for the high school and of course exams, students, uh, can, uh, score as many as four points based upon their end of course score. And I want to show you just a quick example of what the ratings, how the ratings are calculated at an individual level for a student and how we could expand that to, uh, a school. So imagine we had a specific student at the elementary school who scored meets expectations in ELA and approaches expectations in math. That student would, uh, earn a corresponding two points in ELA and one point in math for a total of three points, um, that that student would earn, uh, based upon his or her SC Ready performance. Now the student could have earned as high as three points for ELA, uh, or math, uh, for both of them. So could have had as, as high as six points. So if we have the total number of points that student earned based upon their port, performance, and you take that divided by the total number of points possible, we get some sort of ratio. Now on the slide before, uh, we said that elementary and middle school performance on SC Ready for academic achievement was worth thirty-five percent. So if we take that point five or one half and multiply it by thirty-five, we're going to get a value of seventeen point five. So what that essentially means for this individual student, if this student were a school, that student would have earned seventeen and a half points or would have fallen in the average range, uh, on the academic achievement portion. So if we know how to compute it for one student, the total number of points divided by the total possible points, we can do it for an entire school. And that's what we do for academic achievement for elementary, middle and high school. So I'm giving you a quick summary of what that looks like across the schools in terms of the total number of points earned for ELA and math, uh, or for English two and Algebra one, and the total possible points. And the key part on the right-hand side is the total or the percentage of the points earned. And the category weight multiplies either by thirty-five percent for, uh, for elementary and middle school or twenty-five percent at the high school. That was based upon this chart here. So the thirty-five percent and the twenty-five percent come from academic achievement. So if we take those category weights and, and find those points, we can, uh, compare those to, uh, the given categories that, uh, the State Department Education Oversight Committee have come together to tell us in academic achievement, what would that performance look like as a sub-rating? Now, the sub-rating itself for an individual category is not as important in a subcategory as it is for the overall category, but they do tell us what those subcategories, uh, ratings are for each of those subcategories. So if we know how to do this for academic achievement, the, um, the next indicator, prepare, preparing for success is done really the exact same way that we did it for, um, for academic achievement. We look to see whether or not we're dealing with SC, SC Ready or SC Pass, high school, uh, performance, uh, A through F. And we can actually determine the number of students that correspond in each one of those performance levels on SC Ready or end of course, and determine the total number of points. For preparing for success, all of them are ten percent. And so we can multiply the percent of points earned times ten percent and we get these category values of three point five one, three point seven three, and two point seven one. And for preparing for success, which deals specifically with science, science and/or US history at the schools, these would be, uh, these would fall in the below average category at each of the schools. The category for multilingual learners is identified at all of our schools because we have, um, a, a large enough population of students that are tested at each of those schools. So to cre, to determine the calculation or determine, uh, our point value for each of these, we find out what are the number of students that we have that are identified as English learners at each of the schools, determine the number of students that are, uh, considered meeting progress based upon their performance on access for ELLs. And we get a percent of students that are actually meeting progression. And for, uh, all of these, uh, for the multilingual learners, each of them is weighted by ten percent. So you can take the percent of students meeting annual progress and divide it by ten and we get values that look like this. Each of, um, them falling in that below average range for access for ELLs. Probably one of the hardest categories to really try to share with you in, in a, in a calculation ways is student progress or student growth. For elementary and middle school, student growth is calculated based upon how the student performs in ELA and math, uh, from one year to the next. And the hard part is it's dependent upon how students score on SC Ready, uh, ELA and math statewide. So it isn't something that I can replicate and actually show you what the calculation is. The state shares us some information. It's one of those black box kind of things and we kind of have to take it for, for what it is. And so one of the things that we noticed when we looked at MAP data and some of our summary of SC Ready data, uh, within the past couple of months is we saw a, a, a lot of growth at the, uh, middle school level. And that's one of the reasons why we have, uh, the growth scores at the middle school looking, uh, about where they are. And so the state gives us what those points totals are, but essentially that means, uh, for the middle school, we had growth that was, um, very above average and at the elementary school, it was slightly below average. Now, one of the things that exists is the elementary school rating is only, has two co, two cohorts of kids, third moving to fourth and fourth moving to fifth. And the middle school has three cohorts. It's those, the students that were in fifth grade from the elementary school that moved to sixth and then the sixth and seventh grade moving corresponding to seventh and eighth grade. Graduation rate is probably one of the easier, uh, calculations, uh, in terms of the report card rating. Ca, uh, the graduation rate is, is essentially you take the graduation rate and then for this year, it was at eighty-six percent. You subtract fifty and then, so we have about thirty-six and you divide it by two and that gives us, uh, the, the rating value, uh, for the graduation rate. And so this year, uh, eighteen point oh-two, that puts us kind of right in the middle of the good category for graduation rate this year. And one of the challenges to graduation rate deals with, um, it, it explicitly, explicitly, uh, corresponds with college and career readiness. A couple of years ago, students who did not graduate did not count as part of college and career readiness indicator. But the last couple of years, that had, that is not the case. All students that are part of the graduating cohort, regardless of whether or not they graduated or not, are part of the college and career readiness. So in some cases, those students that are non-graduates, many of them are not college and career ready. And it's in some cases we get double, it seems like we get double counted for those students. But for college and career readiness, uh, students can earn college and career readiness if they meet one of the college ready indicators. Those are things like their ACT score is above twenty, SAT score is above ten twenty, they have an AP score greater than or equal to three. Some of the career ready, uh, indicators are their CTE completers. They have a win score, uh, that is silver, gold or platinum. And so when we look at some of these kids that, uh, that meet that criteria, um, we essentially take the number of college and career readiness, uh, students divided by the total number of students in that cohort and you multiply it by twenty-five and in this case we get seventeen point four-four. So we are almost complete with all of our indicators. The last one is another difficult, uh, indicator to really look at. It is school climate. And school climate at the schools deals with, um, I think, close to twenty-seven different student and teacher surveys combined. And essentially what they do is the state takes an average of these, uh, stu, um, of these, uh, survey, uh, questions from the end of the year. And they come up with kind of a weighted, uh, factor analysis or, uh, normed value for each of these. Again, it's really difficult to try to replicate because we don't, the, the state does not share survey results for all of the other schools throughout the state. But they tell us what those things look like. And so these are some of the general areas or dimensions in which, uh, some of those questions come from. Teacher server, teacher survey items that focus on, uh, instructional focus or working conditions and safety and student survey items that deal specifically with the social, physical environment and the safety of, um, of the school. And, uh, in general, we get, uh, scores for climate that are average or better across the schools. When we add all these up, we get a total value, uh, at each of the schools, forty-three, fifty-four and fifty-three. When we compare these values to the rating ranges, uh, that the state has indicated, uh, for report card ratings, um, we get, uh, scores of average and good this year at the middle school. Now, for twenty twenty-four, there are some changes that are coming to the report card system. Most of them deal with the student success or that growth, uh, metric. The state is moving to a different growth model for elementary and middle school students. And instead of those scores being based upon how students perform across the state, what they're going to do is they're going to have a fixed target where students are going to be able to show growth against. So the idea would essentially be, uh, so instead of, you could, uh, under the current scenario, you could have students that grow a whole ton. Uh, but when students around the state also grow, we don't necessarily get credit for that. So that's one of the things that can exist. Maybe the negative to this current model is students can, their scores could, uh, look like they actually drop compared to a fixed value and, in which they actually might not be. So there's two different scenarios that we're looking at, um, that exist for elementary and middle schools. There's a mean, median target and there's what's considered an added value target. So two targets that's, uh, in each individual student is going to have for growth. High schools, um, the state is looking at introducing, um, this idea of on-track, um, for graduation. So instead of just saying students are starting this year in a NIGR and did they graduate four years later? They're going to start tracking students in kind of these four-year increments and that's going to be built into the report card system. So right now it's just the first year, uh, but eventually that's going to build all the way through graduation. And they're also adding, uh, within that same student success area, a fifth year graduate, um, compilation. So those are some things occurring with, uh, the report cards this year. That was a lot. I tried to get through it quickly. Are there any questions that I can answer about the report card ratings themselves?
I do have a question. And that was a good job, a good math lesson there. How did the twenty twenty-three report card results compare to the previous year?
Sure. So the elementary school was almost unchanged. It was almost exactly the same as it was from the prior year. Uh, the middle school was up quite a bit. The middle school was up, um, I guess eleven rating points total. And much of that is due to some of the growth that we have been witnessing over the last couple of months. And the high school went down a little bit, really because of two primary areas from last year. The graduation rate went from, I want to say it was right at ninety percent in the year, year before to eighty-six. So we lost just a couple of points, uh, with, um, graduation rate. And I think it, like I was talking about earlier, that college and career readiness indicator is dependent a little bit on the graduation rate as well. So that's how our scores, uh, this year compared to what they looked like last year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
With the new target that you're talking about, I mean, is that just a different way of calculating these things? Or would you foresee that being advantageous to, uh, you know, our, our scoring for the next year, the next couple of years?
My initial thought is to tell you it's kind of up in the air, but I think one of the things that, that I recognize is at least we're not looking at a black box where we don't know what the scores look like. We don't know what students are being measured against throughout the state. We at least have something that students and teachers can look at to say, okay, these are, these are, these are what we're measured against. In the system that ended in twenty-three, we really didn't know what we were being, students were being measured against. And so I, may, maybe it's a good, maybe it's a good option that at least we know. Whether, whether or not it's the best or better, um, is kind of, kind of up in the air.
Could you go back one screen to, to next year's idea?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yes.
The median annual target and the added value target.
Yep.
For the elementary and the middle schools. When you, you now say they're going to compare to a fixed target.
Yep.
What's going to happen to the schools that had scores that were already high? Since there's not much room for gain.
So, so one of the things that the state has done is they're trying to use a process with SC Ready that it looks more like what we are probably familiar with in MAP. Where a student scored in a prior year a specific scale score.
Right.
And they're looking at students throughout the state who scored at that scale score and asking the question, how did those students end up the next year?
Right.
And they kind of take the average of that and they say that's the median. So we'd have, you know, fifty percent of the kids would score, who started at that level would score higher. And fifty percent of the kids that following year would score lower. So that's kind of what they're, what they're doing with the median annual target is trying to figure out for students that go from one year to the next, on average, their score should look like this. That's the median. And so it's going to look more like the, of what we, what we're, what we're used to with formative assessments. Now the added value target asks the question, I'm going to use this as a third grader. It's, uh, if we had a third grade student who, that's, uh, was scoring, let's just say on the low end. A question might be asked, what has to happen in order for that student in third grade to get to meets by the time they're finished with eighth grade?
Right, make gains.
Yep, so they track what that's supposed to be each year. Now that, that growth target is probably close to the eightieth percentile, at least the first year for that kid, for that student. So the student would have to make really high level growth every single year continuously in order to make that target by the time they finish eighth grade. That's what that added value target is going to essentially look at. What percentage of students are meeting that level of target to essentially be at the meets level by the time they finish eighth grade? I, I think that's, that's probably generally a good way to, to describe it.
I understand that. And that's going to be really hard to do, but at the same time, it's also going to tell you how much progress these students are making toward the end goal.
Yes. Yes. If it was extra credit, I'd feel better, but it's, uh, I think, I think that's.
Your high achievers, is it not?
You, well, I'm, I'm not.
Because they're already, like you got a kid who's already in the ninety-ninth percentile, ninety-fifth, he's got nowhere to go.
They, they at least have to make that, that median growth. So yeah, if you're looking at students who are in exceeds, I'm not, I'm not quite sure exactly how it's going to look for students who are above that level. But I can say, you know, for the kids who are at some of the low levels, I think, I don't, I don't know. I mean, it, maybe it's extra credit's the right way to think about it, but many of those students, some of you have seen in classrooms and they are not, um, I would say many of the students are not normally distributed. So there's, some of those students are, you know, students who have special needs. Many of them might be students who are English learners in, in the classroom who are just, you know, beginning to understand the language and be able to assess. And so, you know, that's, it's, it's something to think about. I'm not exactly sure how things are going to work out in this category next year. And, um, but it's something that we're working through.
But this does include special needs students and ESL students. So then we've also got to include those who, who miss the label of special ed students by that much, but they're still going to have to meet those targets.
Yep, all students will have a median annual target and added value. Yes. Yep, all students will have a median annual target and an added value, yes.
That's probably not so bad.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right, at this time, we will move on to our action items. Um, six point one is approval for the BNL middle school students to take a STEAM field trip to the Charlotte Motor Speedway on March fourteenth, twenty twenty-four in Charlotte, with, um, presented by Ms. Tristan Howell, Kim Lawson, and Rhonda Rose, BL middle school teachers.
Hello, I'm Rhonda Rose. I am representing our teachers tonight for the seventh-grade team at the middle school. We would like to take a trip to Charlotte Motor Speedway. They have an amazing STEAM program. We took fifty students last year. It was a, um, a time of collaboration, critical thinking, where the students worked together to build a race car. They, um, were given time to build the race car, they were, got to go out on the track, the dragway track itself, race their cars, talk about things that needed to be adjusted. They came back in, made those adjustments, and then they got to go back out and race again. So it was a great team-building activity for the students. Uh, we would like to do that again this year, taking fifty students on a chartered bus, leaving probably seven in the morning, returning by three-thirty in the afternoon. Um, it's, it was an awesome opportunity for them last year. Questions?
Any questions?
Madam Chair, I'd like the recommendation that we approve BL MF students to take a STEAM field trip to the Charlotte Motor Speedway on March fourteenth, twenty twenty-four in Charlotte.
We have a motion from Ms. Carey for approval for the BL middle school students to take a STEAM field trip to the Charlotte Motor Speedway, Speedway on March the fourteenth, twenty twenty-four in Charlotte. Do I have a second? Second by Dr. Gunner. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Y'all have a great time. Item six point two, first reading approval of Policy BD, Organization of School Board, with Ms. Sonia Bryant.
Good evening. I know y'all are very disappointed we have only one little lonely policy this month. I will do better next month. We thought we'd start the year off a little easier. It is a very straightforward change that we're recommending with Policy BD, um, and really, it is just as I stated in the letter, in your packets, it is just to align our practices with our policy. Um, typically what's happened, uh, you as a board have not sworn in annually, um, newly-elected, or you have not sworn in each board member each time. Each year as it rolls around, we do that just as the new election takes place. So we are recommending that we take out the words and sworn in annually, um, as a revision to this policy, just again, to align with your practice.
All right, so we have that before y'all from the administration and Ms. Bryant. Any questions?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve first reading of Policy BD, Organization of the School Board, as presented by the administration.
We have a motion from Ms. Boultonite to give first reading approval of Policy BD, Organization of the School Board, as presented by the administration. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Derrick. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. This time, we will move on to, um, item seven point one, executive session for a discussion of personnel matters, including the superintendent's evaluation and contract.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we leave it to executive session for discussion of personnel matters, including the superintendent's evaluation and contract.
Have a motion from Dr. Gunner to move into executive session for a discussion of personnel matters, including the superintendent's evaluation and contract. Do I have a second?
I second.
Second with Ms. Boultonite. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. We are now in executive session.